All right, so there are no proclamations. We're going to go to our sewer rate study presentation. Paul?
Sure. Would you like me to address the -- you want me to speak into the mic, right? How do you want to do that? I can do it here.
Yeah, I think this is.
Okay, so we're here to present what is the final sewer rate study. I'm going to go through a progression for those in the audience, which is basically going to take us from the beginning of the process. And we're going to talk about the existing rates and the usage. We'll talk about how the usage was revised. We'll then get into projected revenues using the old rates with the revised usage. And then we'll talk about the new proposed rate structure, which is really what's driving the bus now. And then I'll go through some slides and we'll talk about the new rate and how that rate is being proposed to phase in over a three-year period. And we'll talk about the results with the usage in the buildings and how that all plays out with the dollars and cents, projected revenues, new rates, and what that really means when we look at it in total. I just think in total, what you'll see is that the three-year phase-in is going to be showing approximately a $630,000 total reduction in sewer user fees, which are going to be charged over that period of time, which will be collectively charged or respectively charged from the residential side as well as the commercial side and how that breaks down and how the variations have changed and what the purpose of the report is. So that's just an overview. This report or this PowerPoint is supported by a sewer rate study. We had one done that was presented in May. It was presented on May 23rd here, governing body for the public. And then we went back and did numerous variations of that particular report at that time. And the report that we supported by is dated September 27, 2019. And that is the final report. So if we start to flip through, as I said before, we're going to go through the progression here and lay out a timeline as to how this was developed and really what happened. We're going to start out, obviously, with all historical data. So that you can see that the historical data, the old rate and the old rates were residential, were being charged at 3.22 per quarterly flat fee. There was unlimited usage, there ain't no excess. Commercial was being charged at 3.22 per EDU per quarter. They were allowed an EDU usage of 22,000 gallons. And then they were paying an excess usage at a rate of $19.01 per thousand gallon. But that's just historical perspective. And this also is an historical perspective. So when we first started the process, we looked at the rates. We also then took a look at comparing rates, dollars, bills, and use. Kind of that all of that stuff. What we did discover is that when we looked at the historical allocation, we saw just, if you could see here, that the percentage of usage by two categories of lending and commercial, comparing the median billing percentage to the usage that were bearing. So you can see here that the residents were up 2%. Percentage of usage was only roughly 92 and change, and they were getting billed at almost 95% of the total collection. So at that point, we've obviously realized that there was a disparity between the two components. And then the mayor and councilors who were a committee charged us were going through and trying to determine, let's look at various components or various analysis and variations where we could come up with a plan that would alleviate disparity. So the next slide starts to make that correction. And this is really from all the work that went in a front where we started to look at water usage. And what was determined is that going through the water usage, a couple of things were identified. One, in the water usage still was the school, which was no longer being used. The building part of the process, so we had a disparity there. We also had one particular user which had a large number or a large relief system. So that individual was being charged based upon water usage. And those adjustments had to be made on the commercial side. And so was the school, schools also identified on the commercial side as well. And then we had some unneeded accounts that we had to eliminate. So after going back and looking at the existing components that are identified in the commercial mixed use, those corrections had to be made. So we had usage that was sitting in commercial mixed use where adjustments had to be made. After we make those adjustments, we correct the usage on that side, you can see now that the usage, as it's restated, is going to go forward for those modifications, going to be now the baseline. So we're looking at now, it's changed a little bit. Your residential still is a usage of 94.3 and paying the 95.7. And the commercial is 5.7 usage and only paying 4.1. So now we were trying to deal with the disparity of originally 2 and change. Now we're looking at 1.5. And that's what led to the next component of the data. What we did here is, once we've now made the so-called correction to some of the usage accounts on the commercial side with the adjustment, we were able then to recast what we think the financial impact is going to be based upon the new usage numbers, keeping the rate, keeping everything else identity. Where are we going to be dollars and cents? How is that going to play out? This is detailed in our report and how we went through this and what was the thought process of the process as to the assumptions that we were making as we start to forecast this out. So 2018 was obviously actual data. And then 2019, obviously, we're in it. So we have a pretty good handle on 19 because a lot of it was historical data. And then we had a forecast out 2021. So the biggest takeaway on this particular page is that, of course, the rents are going to be stable, same dollars to be raised. We went through and analyzed it with CFO, all these various components, connection fee, I think we took this conservative route that we were no longer going to anticipate connection fees going forward. The unexpendative balance in the appropriation reserves, municipal government, the budget last, but a two-year cycle. Those numbers were coming down because I think the governing body has been doing a tighter job on the budget. And you know that there's less areas of excess in the budgeting process as we go forward. So that's why those numbers are miscellaneous, it's just miscellaneous by looking at what we've seen in the past and what we expect. And then really on the expenditure side without going crazy in the detail. Generally speaking, operating with looking at roughly a 2% increase. You get some buys in your utility, you can get a little bit more and help them aside. The sewer rate charge was, I believe, at 7%. Capital outlay was an estimate. This, we went back and forth many times, we changed it many times. The $500,000 that's sitting in 2019, that's right out of the budget. And then going forward, that number was reduced to an estimated $150,000. And that's been a continuous improvement in the current system. That service is an actual component. If nothing, we're not projecting it, if it's actually that service, I would currently hammer that. Deferred charges, deferred charges are just your S and pension, some of those items that are in there. The big thing in 2018 is that there was roughly, the majority of that was the deferred charge that had been paid through the budget cycle. Any ordinance, any ordinance to the budget cycle. So really what this does is to basically set up a -- So now that we've adjusted those usage for the residents and we know what we're going to collect on the commercial side and the residential side, how does that play out as dollars? But really, we're just, for this purpose, we're trying to forecast, we're a fund balance. We started at 3.5 million and the end, all the way on the right, on 3 million, 200,000. So we have baseline data. And that baseline data now is used to go through and lay the groundwork as to what were some of the modifications we could have made. And so now we have some of the modifications. And this now is a, you could put it, the byproduct of lots of hours, lots of meetings, lots of different conversation. The whole engineer was intimately involved in this process. So we're committing a lot of input, a lot of different conversations, how this was going to play out. Ultimately, this became the end result. So what we have is we have the residential structure will be assessed once we do the use. So there is no change from the old model to the new models or is the rate structure itself. Still unlimited use on the residential. All of the change is really a fear, most of the change is really a fear on the commercial side of the lending. So you can see each separately needed commercial account or unneeded commercial building structure serviced by well will be assessed one EDU. So it's really a shift from buildings to now meter. The old system used to assess the EDU per building structure in the report. Now it's been converted into looking at a building structure being assessed based upon metered. And we get it a little bit more in the detail here as to what that really means. So on a commercial mixed use, you can see we have one EDU, separately needed commercial accounts, plus we have one for each apartment of two or more bedrooms. And then if you have fewer than one bedroom, or one bedroom is half of the EDU. Another big change here is that one EDU, what we define now as 10,950 gallons water usage per quarter. The old was 22,000 gallons. So we have some major changes here that are being built into the rate structure. And let's talk a little bit what that means. So now we have a new proposed rate structure. And the proposed rate structure on the residential side is going to lower the EDU from the 3.22 and a half to 300 dollars per quarter. The usage will remain unchanged, with no change, unlimited, as I said. And as I said in the beginning, that the plan here is to phase this in over a three-year period to soften the increase as we see the kind of play out. So again, residential noise is going to be a drop of basically from $1,290 a year down to $1,200. The big change is going to be on the commercial side. So the commercial side, they were at the same EDU, the 3.22. They're now going to get lowered as well. They're going to be lowered to 300,000 per quarter for EDU. What was happening is now the usage allowance changes. There was 22,000 gallons per quarter, now it's 10,950 per quarter. But the real difference here on this particular schedule is you'll see the excessive usage charge per 1,000 gallon. It was, it used to be under the old rate structure, 93,000 and 800. Now it's going to be $21.92 for 2020. It's going to go up to 24.66 in 2021. And finally, it's going to tap out at 1,740 in 2022. So the next slide, what did we accomplish by doing that? We accomplished what we really set out to do. And that was to soften the variance, soften the allocation between which component was using water versus what they were actually paying. Now we're at a diminished amount, 0.4%. We've now gone through the process where, based upon the new rate structure and the building cycle, you'll see as a result of the dollar component, that now we're being fairly equitable on that side. So the percentage of water is actually kind of matching up to the building percentage. And that was really a role of the entire study. So now, as we proceed further down the trail, now that we have a new rate structure set, we've adjusted the usage charges as I indicated before, how does this now play out on our projected revenues, expenses, and fund balance? So all the scenarios and all the assumption on revenues and expenditures, nothing has changed. It's all constant, identical to the figures exhibit that I showed you. The big thing that you can see here now is that we have the rents and the projected rents increased, decreased. So what does this really show? It shows you that in 2020, under this scenario, that we're actually going to reduce rents or collections of dollars of $220,000 based upon the implementation of this new rate structure. And as we go to 2021, we're going to have to compound the effect. So it's really going to be minus 2.20 plus the 10. So it's really a minus $210,000 in 2021. And then it's going to be a minus $200,000 in 2022. So over that time period, based upon this, that the governing body now is going to reduce the total collections of sewer rents collectively, rent total of roughly $630,000. So in essence, how do you do that? And we'll get to it at the very end. But really what you do is you wind up using cash on the other side. And that was part of our road code. So I'm going to flip you up. And just one more point, if I go back to that. You can see we started out with the 3 million on the left bottom fund balance at the end of the year, 3,520,000. Now, under this scenario, fund balance is coming down at 2,538,000. Okay, so now we're talking about the rate impact. What does that really mean? So we're going to compare the existing to the proposed. And I kind of did that briefly before, but you can see that. So residential going from the 3.22, now down to 300. Drop of $22 per quarter. Commercial, you can see the same thing as I said before. We went over all these numbers. We've got all these changes going on here. And the effective rates, as I said before, I kind of went over, and it was the 1918, and now it's going to go to the 2192. And you can see how that's going up per thousand gallon. And that just sort of looks from a rate structure. But I think what's more important is, let's talk about what does it really mean in dollars and cents? So the next slide is going to give you that perspective a little bit more on percentages side. And I'll also lay it out in dollars. So if we look at the residential side, as I indicated before, 3.22 existing versus now a proposed rate of $3. So the residential component, the residential bill, should see a reduction of 7% in 2020. And then that reduction will be stable. It will stay at that reduced number. As I said before, you know, it's basically the difference between the 3.22 and the 300. So that's what we're going to see on the revenue. The commercial side is going to see roughly, if you look at it this way, on the proposed rate, it showed really a 58% rate increase at 65%. But in reality, that's not what's going to happen on their side. The residential side will really see a reduction of 7%. So as we talked about before, I had a roughly $220,000 reduction in total collections for 2020. And how does that get made up? So we know that we have a reduction on the residential side of 7%. So that 7% on the residential side really equates to $870,000 less that we're going to collect on the residential side. Again, I know I'm only showing the $220,000 total reduction in collection. So I've got to make up that roughly $50,000. And that $50,000 is going to be made up on the commercial. The commercial billing are not nearly as large as the residential billing. So their $49, roughly $49,000, if they're going to make up, they're going to have an actual increase in 2020, which is going to be roughly 29%. So they're going to be looking at roughly, across the board, if you had a averages, a 29% increase on their bill in 2020. Residents with 7% reduction. Just to give you perspective of how many dollars we build, on the residential side, we build $3.8 billion from the residential side. The commercial side is only $171,000. That's the old rate. The new rate, we're going to drop our $3.8 billion down to roughly $3.5 million. And on the commercial side, they're going to go from 171, they're going to go up to 220. We'll see a 7% reduction in commercial and mixed use. We'll see a 29% increase. When they go forward, they'll in essence see a 5% increase in 2021 and a 5% increase in 2020. And there's one more slide, I believe. And I kind of covered everything here. And this is just showing where the fund balance is. But I think what we're really showing you here is that, obviously, as I said before, the fund balance now is blocking. So that right-hand column is the proposed rates, left-hand is if we did nothing. So you can see that the difference between the December 31st, 2022, 3,218,000 compared to the 2,588,000, the proposed rate, will add up to $630,000. But I just showed you how we collected or reduced over that. Reduced by the 20, 210. That is the sewer rate study.
We're open.
Can I ask from here? If I'm asking you a question. I have two questions. One, have you ever done a case rate standard in this new before? When? When? For this, no, no, for this particular town. No, no, for this particular town.
For this town?
Yes.
We've never done this formal rate study. We've done forecasts or looked at some forecasting revenue surplus numbers at one time. But we've never gone through this type of a matter. I haven't.
My second question is, your rate structure that you have for the commercial, is there any particular reason why you're tiering it other than to save them from the massive increase all at once? Even though they've --
You mean you're asking about the phase-in?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that was something, again, we were taking a direction from the governing body. Well, when we first presented the report, we looked at that report and everybody realizing the problems and the fact that we're not trying to try to have an undue severe increase on a particular component. And some of the ideas that were floated around in the mayor and the committee said, listen, why don't we try looking at possibly some kind of phase-in, soften that blow? And that was really the reason that that came about.
So you're giving the commercial units the fairness of looking away from the fund balance to help ease the blow for something that was incorrect for 15 years?
Well, listen, I'm not going to speak to that. The only thing I can tell you is that really -- You know, I mean, yeah.
We decided, rather than looking back, trying to fix 16 years' worth of problems, whatever you want to call them. We decided to draw a line in the sand today and look forward. Try to make it equitable, try to make it fair, not only to the residential, but to the commercial. We looked at the phase-in because we felt that it was a large increase and to eat the apple in one bite wasn't fair to the commercial. So we decided to phase in. The other thing we looked at is that through our analysis, we noticed that we had a substantial fund balance, certainly outside of normal percentages. So we decided to look at that as well and try to impact the fund balance and try to make it equitable. We were trying to make it fair to everyone. And we didn't want to go back and say, well, 10 years ago you did this, 11 years ago you did that. Because what's done is done, and we couldn't fix it anyway. So we felt that rather than looking backwards, we were going to look forward. And that's the reason why we did that. And that's really all it comes down to. We want to look at from today on, rather than going back and say, how do we fix building inequality, whatever things had happened? Because none of us were part of that. None of us knew the details of why it happened. Why address it? Done. Let's look from today and look forward.
I agree on looking forward from today, but the fund balance by its definition, residential is the one that created most of that fund balance. We are essentially still favoring for the next few years the commercial units, and while I don't want to necessarily --
Actually, no, no, I disagree with your statement that we're favoring it. Because we're actually bringing the commercial more in line with their usage. And we're just deciding to phase it in because it's such a drastic change. We are not penalizing residents at all. As a matter of fact, they're getting a 7% decrease. So they're not being penalized.
You're using the money that was saved by reactivating the billing for 15 years to help soften the --
Again, I can't fix that.
And I'm not saying that you should. But at the same time, you're tiering this. Work up to something that should have been placed in correct 15 years ago. You're still softening the blow to the benefit. And that's not a --
Again, always looking back is not going to solve anything. So we decided to try to be as equitable and as fair as possible for all users of the sewer bill. We didn't want to just say, oh, let's have a tremendous reduction in residential and put the total burden on the commercial. But in a sense, that we didn't think was fair. So we tried to become equitable and fair. And we think this is the best way.
Fair would be said in a game, or it should be.
Fair is fair. You could call fair one thing, I could call fair something else. I could say it's fair when it's 62 degrees outside. You could say it's fair when it's 70 degrees outside. This is what the committee decided. This is what we believe in, right?
I'm just looking at the rest of the council, really. I just want to make sure that's fair.
This is the report that the committee made to the full council. When we vote on the resolution, each council member, if they have concerns, can certainly bring those up and say what they want and vote accordingly. And that's where we are.
I'm not a stone, no, he's a stone. I see they want you to hear. Harry Walker, you guys, it's a -- So if I understand right, you're going to decrease, you're looking to decrease the residential and make no restitution to 15 years of incorrect billing. Because you want to move forward. Now, if I owned a business and I overbuild, I would think that I'd have to make some sort of restitution for incorrect billing.
I don't think so, incorrect billing. You just don't think there was equity distribution of the call.
I'd like to jump in. I think, you know, what happened is this was a point in time that we actually looked at the data. You know, we didn't look at the data the year before, five, six, seven, 10, 16 years ago. That evolved. And those percentages were evolved each year. We know that when we looked at the data based upon what historical information that there was at this point, that we had the residential component paying a percentage more than what they actually knew. So it's a fluid, it's a fluid usage calculation. But we know as of this point in time, the goal wasn't to align the two, and that's what the governing body did.
And like, to be honest, I don't think there would have been going to look back if the two women that were coming to the meeting didn't come up and make points. Because everybody was buying their mother's champagne and collecting the money. They really didn't care about the residents. And your solution still doesn't feel that the residents --
Getting Richie one home stat in the ground. What I don't understand is we're giving commercial three years to catch up. Why are we, as residents, not stepping down in that three years and getting decreases continually? So as commercials ramping up, carrying their full load, we carried the load for 16 years. Why are we not going from 300 to 290 to 280 as the commercial goes up? Why do we have to stay at $300 forever until you change it again or something happens again? That's what doesn't make sense to me. I'm a resident, I've been carrying that for 16 years. I'm a resident, I've been carrying that for sixteen years as long as three thousand other residents in this town. I think we deserve a little bit more than a seven percent raise. One. Because my taxes eventually will go up, school bills will go up, things are going to go up. But businesses get three years to catch up. We get one. Here you go. Thank you very much. You were saying?
Well, I may, after just commenting and commenting regarding the report, because one thing, there's a couple of things I think that we stated it, but maybe not quite as clearly as we could have. One is when we did the look back, and we did a look back, I hear a lot of this talk about sixteen years. We looked back two years, okay? So everything we're presenting in the report is based on a two-year look back, not sixteen. I can make no statement to what happened sixteen years ago. That's the first thing. The second thing is, when I go back with... This slide right here, I wanted to, I wanna be clear on this, okay? When you're looking at these percentages of billing and for commercial versus residential, this is over the next three-year period. So while you're looking at and saying the commercial are getting a break over, you know, to catch up, they will be actually paying six point one percent over the three-year period versus five point seven. They're actually more than catching up. And that's total over the three-year period. So even though we're phasing it in over three years, over that three-year period, they are paying their fair share over that three-year period.
The first time.
Correct. Like I said, it's the charges to look forward.
We, we don't, we don't know if it's the first time.
Well, in the two years that you did the study.
Yeah, but, you know, so we, we know that the numbers now are representative of what they should be. And, and, you know, and I think that could speak to the larger concern is that, you know, we know where the surplus is or we're projecting it. But now this is, this is the initial stages of a new rate. So the idea is to let this thing mature, let it go through its three-year cycle, and then we'll look at the actual result. Governing body then will have the opportunity to go back and take a look at it. And then they come back and have another study and say, "Well, you know what? We're actually not reducing the surplus quick enough, and now we wanna reduce the rate again." And maybe a, a whole system-wide reduction. Right now, the whole purpose of this was to get everything back aligned to this way. Everything's mirroring each other. Both sides are paying their equitable share, if you will. And then you have the opportunity down the road again to compare the projected to the actual results and the opportunity for them to come back again with additional monitoring.
Ben Johnson, six, Meriticon. Um, in here, in the report, I wrote you had it up there. There were two things that I just, I was confused.
Are you on a, are you on a PowerPoint?
I'm, no, I'm on the thing that's online, the report that's online here. So it says here, "Each separately metered commercial account or un-metered commercial account, commercial building structure serviced by wells, regardless of the number of commercial businesses, will be assessed a minimum charge of one ECU." But then...
Hands up.
It says, um, yes, that's right. "Each separately metered commercial account or un-metered commercial building structure serviced by wells will be assessed a minimum charge of one ECU." And underneath that, it says, "Each separately metered mixed-use commercial account will be assessed a minimum charge of one ECU for all commercial businesses, regardless of the number of commercial businesses, plus one ECU for each residential apartment." So my understanding is that most, if not all, of the commercial properties in town are individually metered for water. So like, I, I always use twenty-two lake sites because I think it's like a, a good, in a two-bedroom apartment upstairs. If you go on our whip and you look up the tax information, they each have their own meter, their eat, their usage, you can see each one of their usage over the time. So the woman who lives on the top, she would, she would be billed for one ECU, which would be three hundred dollars to two hundred, it would be three hundred dollars a quarter, right? Okay. My question is, it's kind of, I'm confused. Is it one ECU per, if they're all individually metered, then what's...
I think, and Julie can jump in too, but I think that the biggest distinction is it used to be one ECU.
And now it's gonna be one ECU per...
Per meter.
So it's one ECU per meter, and it's...
That's the big distinction. That is the, that's the big distinction.
Okay, all right. Because that was gonna be my next question. Because that was gonna, "Why are we doing that? Because then that's all more, you know, you're getting more money in..."
Right.
Okay, okay.
And that was one of the, you know, this thing evolved over many means.
Right, right.
John being involved.
I got it.
Kinda how it all came about.
Okay, so, okay, thank you. And then, as our bonds and loans drop off, we have two or three dropping off, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. But our MSA loan is also dropping off. Twenty-two, right? Exactly. We have four plus MSA, right? There's twenty...
We don't have our MSA debt. They have a debt. We pay, it's not our debt. We have four more.
It's part of our fee.
It's part of our fee.
It's part of our fee. But we will see a reduction in that the...
Twenty twenty.
Twenty-two.
Right.
That's one of the reasons why with this whole study and looking at the debt falling off, I believe in two thousand twenty-two, we should look at this again.
That was gonna be my next... Honest to God, as our bonds and loans drop off, is there maybe a projected, uh, projected decrease in residential and commercial even more? And then...
Oh, I think we were just gonna keep going. I mean, things are good.
Will we have a plan in twenty twenty-two to do another study like this? You know, over the next year or the next four years?
If I'm around, yeah.
Right? That would go to...
We have to start somewhere. And this is the place...
It's a start.
This is our baseline.
I agree. Right, it's a start. Okay, so, and then when, when you have new commercial businesses coming, are they also going to the individually metered as they come?
The ordinance will be the ordinance. It's gonna be equal.
You got it. All right, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
More public? No republic on anything. It said we're open. Come on up. We'll just do the public sector right now.
Okay, great. Uh, may I just move this over this way? I would just like to be able to see everybody. I hate to have my back. And I can always just carry this one thing. Everyone, can you hear me okay? Okay. Um, thank you, Mayor Francis, council members, citizens and residents of Papancong, both here tonight and watching online for your time, attention and consideration. You probably don't know me and are very likely wondering what I'm doing standing here in front of you tonight. My name is Kate. I have a master's in social work from King University. I've spent ten years as a social worker, working with primarily children and families, both here in New Jersey and in California. And for the last seven years, once I returned to my home state of New Jersey, I've been working in healthcare with residents, medical students, medical education. I became a cannabis educator and resource for individuals, medical professionals, communities, and various organizations seeking information for marijuana-related initiatives. I recently became aware that Papancong has been discussing home swing of the century. And I wanted to come here tonight in the hopes of providing some feedback on the topic so that you can make a really well-informed decision for your citizens. Here's what I've learned over the last few years with the expansion of the medical marijuana program in New Jersey and as the push for recreational marijuana use, or as it's referred to in the industry of the adult use. Legalization looms and people are afraid. Many towns are worried that they'll be pressured to host a dispensary, that a dispensary will increase crime, drive down property rates, and encourage use among minors. And you have a right to wonder. You have a right to wonder how this is going to impact your community, how it's gonna impact the youth. The message we've been hearing for the last century is that marijuana is bad. It's dangerous, it's addictive. And honestly, that's how it became illegal. It was a social marketing campaign, and we've seen the shift in that over the years. Currently, it requires a major shift in our thinking. And I think that's scary, and I believe that's where a lot of the fear comes from. And I hear it in towns like Papancong all over the country. So you're certainly not alone in this. But I'm here to give you some facts about it. Cannabis has been used since the dawn of agriculture as a source of food, fiber and fuel. And marijuana has been used since three thousand B.C. as medicine. Now cannabis comes in two forms, plant and marijuana. Plant has traditionally been used for, say, making sails, ropes in war efforts and things of that nature. And marijuana, because it grows flowers with a lot of good stuff in it, has primarily been used for medicine. So now we're kind of at a point where there's a great debate about whether there's enough research, enough science, enough information to make a decision. And what I'm here to tell you is that there is plenty of science around how marijuana works for pain, for insomnia, for anxiety. We are born, actually, with a system of receptors in our body called the endocannabinoid system. This was born into our bodies twenty-five million years ago when cannabis was born to accommodate that. These receptors fit with THC and CBD molecules. We already have things that look exactly like it in our body. So when the receptors in our central nervous system and in other parts of our body are excited, it exerts activities on our body. Now, sometimes we run low on the natural molecules that we make that are shaped like THC and CBD. And so marijuana then becomes a good substitute for when we kind of need to put our glue back together. They act like natural environmental regulators. THC and CBD can regulate with blood sugar, inflammation, it's neuroprotective. There are studies that show that ingesting CBD immediately after a stroke, a traumatic brain injury, a concussion, a car accident, can actually mitigate the long-term effect of those injuries on your brain. If you've seen any of the video footage of children who were having seizures or people who are having seizures and they ingest CBD and that seizure stops, I've seen that in person. I've seen many, many videos of it. But I have seen it work for many people, myself included. The FDA has approved a number of pharmaceuticals, some of which work for the same things as marijuana. But I think we've all, I can say if you have a television, you've seen the commercials. But by the time I get done with the list of side effects, I've forgotten what medication it is and what it's supposed to be. Because we've been using marijuana, whether we've been recording what's been happening or not or talking about it or not, we have a ton of anecdotal evidence. We have a ton of experiential evidence. We do have scientific evidence. We have to look at where that information was coming from, was providing it, and what the purpose of them getting it for. Right? So marijuana remains a Schedule I drug because the federal government says that it has no currently accepted medical use and a high potential for abuse. Some examples of other substances in Schedule I are peyote, LSD and heroin. Some examples of Schedule II drugs, which are not considered as bad by the government as marijuana, would be cocaine, meth, methadone, delolite, demerol, oxycontin, fentanyl, dextrodrine, Adderall and Ritalin. Oh, yeah, am I, okay, I can wrap it up.
No, this is, this is, this is important, but...
Okay, I'll, I'll be advised. Um, synthetic THC, which is a Schedule III substance, is legally prescribed, FDA-approved and totally sanctioned by the United States government. Now synthetic THC is actually stronger and less tolerable than plant-based marijuana THC. The government also has a patent number six-six-three-zero-five-zero-seven that they received in two thousand three for cannabinoids as antioxidants and neuroprotectives. That includes THC and CBD. So with regards to juvenile use, I think this is really an important point, and I'll, I'll spend some time on this. With regards to the fear that having a dispensary in a town will encourage juvenile use, studies overwhelmingly conclude that as a demographic means in adult use states, so those states that have legalized it for recreational use, are not actually using more cannabis. There are several studies in this area published by Preventative Medicine, the Journal of the American Medical Association of Pediatrics, the Journal of Adolescent Health, and the Lancet Psychiatry. Taxing and regulating cannabis places it alongside other adult-only activities. The perception that cannabis causes less harm is actually falling among teens, and so are teen use rates. And that is likely a result of the information that we have coming out now that are, that's informing kids about potential risks and potential benefits. Because human beings are rational consumers, we will go for something that is less harmful with fewer adverse side effects. And teens are, are no different. They, they're very intelligent, and they know that some of what they've been hearing may not be true. In terms of neighborhood crime, available data strongly suggests that licensed cannabis retailers are not associated with increased in neighborhood crime. In fact, liquor stores and tobacco retailers are far more, increase crime far more than a dispensary. In fact, most studies suggest that a dispensary in community actually lowers the crime. You have more eyes on the street, you have cameras, you have more police officers, you have security guards, and that does actually tend to drive the crime rate down. Yeah, I can, well, whatever. I mean, I can open it to questions, I can...
Just wrap, wrap it up. It's a long subject to us and our...
Okay. This is actually the most important. This is a really important piece regarding alcohol and in places where dispensaries are located. It reduces alcohol use in, in some states as much as a thirteen percent decrease in binge drinking in towns that have dispensaries. Binge drinking costs two hundred and fifty billion dollars. Okay, the state of New Jersey pays an average of one dollar and seventy-three cents for every single drink that somebody takes. That's two out of every five dollars in tax money for the consequences of drinking. Now, in those states that we know where they've put dispensaries, whether it's for medicinal use or for adult use, they have experienced a decrease in motor vehicle accidents, a decrease in injuries associated with alcohol use and other substances. They've experienced a decrease in opioid use. They've decreased, they've experienced a decrease in prescription drug use. And they've also experienced a decrease in binge drinking, particularly among youth. So, like I said, I wanted to present this information here tonight because there is a lot out there. And I've spent several years as a patient advocate for myself and for others. I hope that you'll take this under consideration. And again, I do appreciate your time and attention tonight.
Would you leave your contact information to us? Because as we, I have no idea where we're gonna go with it. We did have another presentation, by the way, from the, from the line, Senator Vrechman. And we'll continue to make informed decisions. I have my own personal decision, but I believe that the more the public knows, the more informed decisions we can make. And so, information such as you, right, I'd say, we had a nurse there last time that spoke along the line you're saying. So if you could leave me your, your comments, if you could, and also your contact information. But if we move further, we'll be very open with this. And what, what we do when we have considerations, it'll be done. At a council meeting, it won't be done. In a private meeting, it's so important that I personally believe that anybody that wants to give our community information such as this, I think should do it in a, in a public meeting such as this. I think it's that important. But for the record, if the New Jersey does legalize recreational marijuana, I have my attorney preparing a, a ordinance that will prohibit sale, distribution, growth or anything to do whatsoever with recreational marijuana. Wanted to clear on that. Medical stuff is a whole nother issue that we need to really get our, our head wrapped around. And I believe this is why we do it, by listening to people who are experts in the field and not someone who just has opinions. But I wanna be clear on recreational. Crystal, please.
I certainly appreciate your position, Mayor Francis. And I, again, thank you for your time, your consideration, the council residents. And I would be happy to leave my information, my website, my cell phone number, my email.
Yeah, leave me your, leave me your information for the meeting forward.
How much I can be of assistance, I'm happy to do. My mission is to advocate for wellness. So I'm, I'm happy to do that anytime I can.
Appreciate your comment.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
More public? Hearing none? Second? All right. We're back. Thank you for your answer.
Mayor? Mayor, I could just, just one comment. But I just wanted to bring the council up to speed on the Hudson Avenue Sewer Extension Project. Bring it up now, like, because I wanted to just bring it into the rates and so people understand the value of impact of rates and that sort. As, as the council knows, the, the, there's a great interest of ending sewers onto Hudson Avenue. I don't know the exact address, it might be 140 or nothing. But the proposal is to extend it from, I just, I did want to slide four. So we go to slide four. So what I thought, you know, go to slide four, that's important. So the, we're looking at extended about a 200, 2,300-foot low-pressure sewer system. It's going to be, all the homeowners will be on grinder pumps, and so it's a project that's going to connect approximately 35 new connections. We are pursuing a low-interest loan associated with that project through the UGIRD Producer Trust, and that loan process is used a lot with utilities because it's supported by the federal government where half the loan is given at a 0% and another half is that a market sale that they would go. And that's usually at a very low percentage also, so when they blend the two, you're usually at a less than 2%, 1% loan, so very low interest loan. Now, the opportunity that arose, you know, the looking at Hudson Avenue, but the state of New Jersey is also proposing principal forgiveness associated with that loan. Right now, they're offering 50% principal forgiveness on the loan, and we have asked them to look at 75 or even 90% principal forgiveness because they have had programs in the past where they went up to 75%. And so the anticipated cost associated with that project is approximately $600,000. That includes engineering, legal, administrative contingencies, everything associated with that. Now, the subcommittee and what's been, careful, is that this project is going to follow the same philosophy that we deal with the water system. Utilities themselves don't pay for main extension. The actual users pay for the main extension. So the cost of that $600,000 would be borne by those 35 customers, or actually, we actually look at the, if they could use the property, they're all taking it themselves to buy that. That would be picked up by those individuals. So basically, the utility is not going to pick up that cost. And we are, you know, even though we're trying to give them an opportunity of that principal forgiveness, so the loan grants that I'm talking about really isn't given to the utility, it's actually given to those 35 homeowners who don't pay or pay more than $3,000. We're actually going to pay for that extension, that's what that's going to do. And then, as that project is set up in the sense that they pay for the main extension, within that $600,000, we're also going to purchase the grinder pump. Again, they're paying for it, but we're purchasing them as a group because we know that when we purchase multiple pumps at one time, it's a lot less expensive than an individual homeowner doing so. So we're going to install the main, we're going to purchase the pump and the pump to them, and then they will, in fact, install the grinder pump themselves and connect them to the main. So that would be that. They're going to incur a cost associated with the main extension. They're going to incur a cost with installing the utility on their property, and they're also going to pay the connection fee. The connection fee is $6,000 per connection, and that's basically a connection fee associated with, you know, them buying into the system. And that's done by, ordinance look at that, and they come up with a number that, what's the appropriate number for them to buy into the system. So if this project goes forward, we are having a public hearing, January 8th, is it? And so we're going to just, you know, present that the individual, and it's actually advertised because under the loan program, we advertise that people are going to use the entire town. But we have our letter going out to the individual, property owner, and then ultimately, the committee's going to have to decide. If the council decides they're going to move forward with the project or not based on the feedback from the individuals, they're going to be paying for the project. We have gotten in the past, you know, we have had people on Hudson, this area, asking us to install sewers, so this is the opportunity to provide them with a principal forgiveness and minimize the cost of that. So, you know, I asked for this slide, I know this is something that's starting right away, these are not in your numbers, you know, because you, you know, you only have that connection fee, you know, you only had for 2020 of $1,000. But in fact, if this project does go through, it is going to exert those about $200,000. That's going to be going to that. And then also what's impacted is it's going, no change in the rent from '19 to '20, but in fact, if we're picking up 35 more customers, you're going to have an increase there. So just, and again, this is, it's not something that's, we're moving forward and looking at that opportunity to provide those sewers to those residents that did ask for it in the past, and so we get confirmation that they still want to move forward with that. But that project will have a very positive impact on the budget in the sense that we're going to get surcharge on the connection fee, we'll add new customers, and that's the most ideal way of lowering the rate is having more customers than no cost. So that's, so just wanted to give an update on where we are with the Hudson Avenue. You know, I did speak to the DEP today, again, just speaking to them regarding the principal forgiveness and making sure that the facility is waited for that, and I know we reached out to, like, prospered only by 90%. My expectation, I'm hoping for 75%. I know the program, I think it's going to be bad in the past, but that's a good opportunity to those residents to minimize the cost. And that loan for paying the $600,000, if that's ultimately discussed, because that's just a high investment. Ultimately, we're going to look at their payments would be just a surcharge on their quarterly fee over the length of the loan. The loan would be 20%. So they'll be paying, it's not going to be something that, it should be manageable when you look at comparison of what they're paying for, you know, sewer service or, you know, use of it. So this was good timing. I'm just going to give an update, you know, regarding this.
The update or your update is our proposal is under cover, is that, you know, he came up here for a meeting with the mayor and the commission and the late Sunday. And one of the things he said was they're really encouraging the conversion from septic to sewer. So the reason that they asked for more of a grant or loan forgiveness, if you will, is that if he's really serious about that, then I want to take him up on what he's suggesting. And the difference here is the paradigm shift, if you will, because this is not just a sewer extension, they have a sewer extension for all the reasons you said. It has to do with the health of our lake, it has to do with our environment. And so, take as many septic systems offline that are lakefront is really the principal driver for this. If the driver was economic, we'd have a whole set of criteria for justifying, if you will, the sewer line extension, if that makes sense. But the wild part of this is the lake, condition of the lake, and the effect the condition of our lake has on our, on our quality of life, on our businesses. Our business is a minimum of 40%, hit some more because of the condition of the lake. And according to what I'm told, more than 50% of the nutrients, such as phosphorus and nitrogen, some from septic systems, is just a great lakefront. And so there's a whole lot of other things going on here with that that drives just more than the sewer, sewer utility issues. This is just one of them, just happens to be that. But that's what drives it a lot. It's very open-ended, I'm not sure where it's going to go. You know, we may get 50%, I'd like to get more. But again, that 50% is for people, not, not the utility. The utility bears no cost in there, so that's important, you know.
Just to have a summary note on the big, I think was, it was important to note that 16 years ago, we didn't have the estimate of what the average residential usage, didn't jump from 200 to 120, you know, it didn't progressively. And actually, in 2009, the economy had, it really started to drastically change, I don't know why, but we did see a very drastic change at that time, and it's been progressively changing over time. So, you know, yes, we should have looked back a few years when we saw that drastic drop in usage and that didn't occur. It didn't occur 16 years ago, it happened probably around 2009 is when we started to really drastic change. And I think it's important, the committee, when we discuss looking at this in another, you know, five, three years, or sooner or later, what I think is important is that what's going to happen in the feedback we're getting from the commercial, also the schools, the schools are impacted by this. Their rates are going up substantially, so they keep pulling the commercial thing. And it is going to initiate efforts on the commercial side to look at water conservation measures. And certainly, the schools can do that regarding changing toilets and changing things, and that water usage, it's a drastic drop. So it is difficult for them to project what those water uses is going to be with those conservation measures being implemented. And so I think it's important that we may actually see the commercial start to go down because of this water conservation measure and other things that they're going to do on their side because it is a drastic change for them. And they're going to try to lower their rates as much as possible. We will see that also, and that's why it's important. We're also seeing a drastic change with not just the water usage, but we also for mixed use, you know, it's a significant impact to the commercial usage when, when they're not even getting one EDU where they have two apartments in the one commercial, and now they're going to get three EDUs, and they're going to get, you know, each apartment going to hit with the EDU plus the commercial. Now, you know, when we look at our projections, we try to look at what the water usage is on that commercial and try to make an analysis of what that commercial rates are going to be versus the residential, because now we're, I think, the commercial portion of our rates are actually going to dwindle even further as a percentage of the overall, you know, user base because we're taking all the mixed use out, and now those mixed use are going to be classified now as commercial, and they're going to be residential. So we're going to see a little bit smaller, you know, even a decrease in the amount of percentage that we have. Again, it's just important to look at it.
I hope that cleared up some of the details on where we're at. So we're done with the public. You want to, you're going to report to them now? Okay. I don't want to skip the minutes. This is the part of the late. Flagrant, it's not. All right. We'll, we'll, the regular meeting of November 6th. There, you're going to, you want to.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Any more questions regarding, because you're done. Well, we're done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Is there any questions regarding the Resolution 181?
Yeah, we're, we're done with the public on it. We're going to move on with other.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, John. Have a nice day. Thanks, John. Nice, nice. Thank you. Okay, now we can get to the minute of November 2nd. All right. Second. All the rule?
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Group with the bill, please. Thank you, Mayor. Does anyone need anything out? Not hearing or seeing any, Mayor, I'll move the bill. Second. All the rule, please.
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. For what was presented agenda? If you would. Well, let, table left now. The little table that is that's just second. It's not, it's not. All right, sorry. Good, all right. Next agenda. Two seconds today. I. All right. I propose. Okay, ordinances. Introduction, we don't have any. Final hearing. Ordinance 23, 2019, Amendment, Chapter 51, Borough Code in order to amend Chapter 51 of the Code of the Borough of Akron, Suffolk County, New Jersey, regarding billing of water. Okay. I'll open that to public, any questions? Hearing none? Second. All the rules? All right. All the rule, please.
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Mr. Budula.
Yes.
Mr. Chenler.
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance 24, 2019, auction of 24, 243, block rail. An ordinance of the Borough of Akron, County of Suffolk, State of New Jersey, authorizing to sale of certain property owned by the borough and not required for public purposes, more commonly known as 243 block rail, block 50208, lot 24. So move. Second. Any questions in the public? Hearing none?
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Mr. Budula.
Yes.
Yes. Do we have an auction date anymore? Which would be? December 4th, auction date. What is it? What, next meeting? Is it four? Ordinance 25, 2019, auction of 101 Dartmouth rail. An ordinance for the Borough of Akron, County of Suffolk, State of New Jersey, authorizing to sale of certain property owned by the borough and not required for public purposes, more commonly known as 101 Dartmouth rail, block 40505, lot 17. So move. Second. Any questions in the public? Hearing none? All the rule?
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Mr. Budula.
Yes.
Mr. Chenler.
Yes.
Mr. Chen.
Yes. Auction will be December 4th.
So both of those ordinances say that the auction is December 8th.
It does it?
Okay. So I'm just, if you want it on December 4th, you should vote that way, and then it's on the record, and then.
Well, we voted on December 4th.
Okay. For the two ordinances, if you want those two properties, lot 24 and lot 17, the auction is on December 4th, just.
I would like to make the firmation that these ordinances are going to be changed to an auction date of December 8th.
They were.
They were public? Yeah, you know what?
Well, they're public, then leave it at the end. They're public, then leave it.
Yeah. Because I, I'm running through my mind whether that's some kind of sarcasm change, but if somebody read the publication and.
If they've been published, let's stay with the.
They can be.
Stay with the. I just try and play it. They're expecting it.
So, so the record's clear because they were published that way, it'll be on the.
December 8th. Ordinance 26, 2019, amendment of Borough Code 186-9, an ordinance for Borough of Akron, County of Suffolk, to place in section 186-9 of the Code of the Borough of Akron, and that would be the story. Will move? Second. All the rule, please. Oh, I'll open that to the public. Questions in the public?
Mr. Budula.
Yes. Hearing none? Second. All the rules?
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Mr. Budula.
Yes.
Mr. Chenler.
Yes.
Mr. Chen.
Resolution, Resolution 2019, 176, refund for overpayment of taxes and cancellation of all duty taxes due to total disability status, block 10713, lot 6. Second. All the rule, please.
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Resolution 2019, 177, tax overpayment refund for block 70214, lot 17. Second. All the rule, please.
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Mr. Budula.
Yes.
Mr. Chenler.
Yes. Resolution 2019, 178, hiring of Zachary.
Papaya.
Papaya and broccoli. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So move it. Second. All the rule, please.
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chenler.
Yes.
Mr. Chen.
Yes. All business. What? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Got it. Resolution 2019, 181, a resolution of the Mayor Council of the Borough of Akron, approving a proposal for a market study analysis with former Hudson-McMinns School property. Will move it? Second.
Just a question, no cost to follow that.
It's a Highland Council grant.
And the reason we're doing this is so we can get Highland Council approval for whatever we use, my intention to do with that property.
The reason, reason to do it is they're giving us planning money to the borough that we can better purpose the building and help out the school.
Because it's really school property, that's my point, really, school property.
It is, yeah.
But it's also currently not irritable, and you'd like it to be irritable.
We'd like it to be irritable, exactly.
Well, it's nothing to do with the property, it has to do with our plan.
Yeah. Also, my. Also more cost.
Correct. All the rule, please.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chenler.
Yes.
Now, we can, all business. No business. With the new business, I'm going to, I'm going to ask the council if they want to go back into executive session to continue our early discussions that we were running over three days. When we may come back. And we may come back to regular session if we want to make a decision. So, did I take that correctly?
Yes.
And what we're doing is discussing.
The PBA contract.
The PBA contract. So we may or may not take action on that depending on what the council is. You have to vote, you're on. All the favor.
Aye.
Vote. So we're going to go into executive session. And we may, we, we'll, we'll be back. We may take.